Calling to order a joint meeting of the Needham Select Board and the School Committee. And we have a couple of representatives of the Finance Committee joining us also tonight. If I could first of all, call the Select Board to order, and let me turn to Andrea to call the School Committee to order.
Call to order the School Committee in attendance at this joint meeting with the Select Board.
Great, thank you. So, we're meeting tonight to discuss the IT organizational assessment that I think everybody received sometime in the last couple of days. I know the School Committee, I think, had it maybe a little bit earlier than the rest of us. Just to refresh people's memories, about a year ago, around a year ago, the town lost two significant individuals in the IT structure on the town side. And when that occurred, we approached the School Committee about the possibility of working together on the town's IT structure, and we have done that for the course of the past year. So, this gives us a chance to sit and look at what's happened over the last year, where we are, what might need to occur going forward, is this a good experiment, a bad experiment, other, and what we need to be aware of. Kate, is there something else that I didn't say? That I should have said?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say, we've been very grateful for the support of the School Department and the School Committee over the past year. We had a meeting and issued an RFP for the consultant that we brought in over the summer, and they've been working hard with stakeholders and staff to make these presentations. When they're done, the superintendent will wrap us up.
All right, that sounds great. Then, Dan, do you want to turn it over to the consultant, or should I just? I heard his name, I think, Martin, is that what I... Marvin. Welcome, Marvin, if you would like to introduce yourself and get us underway. We're grateful for the work that you've done, thank you.
So, Martin Troyer, we have you here this evening. How close do I...it sounds like that's working just fine. I believe the presentation is behind there, so I will be able to advance, all right. I'm gonna move this away, I tend to project. So, what we wanted to do...there we go, thank you. First off, just give you a little bit of background on Plant Moran, who we are, and I know you already selected us to do the work, we finished the work, so we're not trying to sell ourselves, but at least try to explain some of our background that was unique to this project. First off, we're...I represent our consulting arm of Plant Moran, and we have over 250 people just focused on technology consulting. And another key component is public sector, so cities, counties, towns, schools, K-12, as well as higher ed is a strong focus for our firm, a big focus area. And so, we've worked with a lot of organizations similar to Town of Needham, and we bring that experience to what we recommended for you, as well as other best practices that we've seen in other industries. Before I get too far into it, I want to say we should probably...I'll go through the presentation. I know a lot of you have seen the materials, I'll go through this at a high level, and then we'll come back for questions at the end, if that's okay, all right. So, I'll try not to be distracted by what I see on the screen over there, so I'll look at you, so I'm not distracted. As you mentioned, your RFP or RFQ that you put out, the town asked really for us to focus on what is the best organizational structure. And the idea that, as you had said, the School Department had been assisting the town, you had some vacancies, so what is that ideal structure? What would...who would be responsible for what? What responsibilities are included with that? So, it's really about the people. And when you look at an organizational assessment, a lot of times you only think about the people, but it's also the processes that are in place, and it's the technology as well. But this one had a very heavy focus on the people, but one of the things you said was, while you're looking at that, what other recommendations can you make that might assist us as we're trying to come up with an optimal structure as it relates to supporting IT? So, that's kind of the basis of why we were called in to do this work, and this gives you some background on the various areas, the kind of data that we collected and the steps that we took to answer that question, how should we be structured? One of the things we did was, we asked for a lot of documentation from your staff, and they...Anne was part of that, Mark was part of that, a lot of staff members collected data for us to review, so we had baseline information. We then did a variety of survey tools, and one of those was an end-user satisfaction tool, and we got over 300 responses to that from both town as well as School Department staff. We also used a couple of surveys for all of the IT staff as well, and so we received responses to that. We interviewed all of the IT staff, some of them in group sessions, some of them in individual sessions, and then we talked to stakeholders as well, because we wanted to get a broad cross-section. Sometimes from a survey, you can't get the between the lines, right? Someone puts a check on a button that says, "I'm very satisfied," or "I'm not too satisfied." We used the stakeholder interviews to fill in the blanks and dig into more detail, and we had 19 sessions with over 90 stakeholders across the entire town. So, that gave us a lot of good data. The other thing we did was look at what are some of the trends that we're seeing in cities, counties, towns like yourselves, what are we seeing in schools as well? And so, this gives you some of the trends. I wanted to cover a few of them right at the top of the list. These are areas of focus, and one of the top ones is cybersecurity. It's something that continues to evolve and something that we have to address on a continual basis. It's not something that you're ever done with, you're always addressing it. The other thing, another couple of things were centered around modernizing systems also, and this is interesting. So, one is modernizing outdated systems, but another one is actually, what do we do as it relates to innovation and applying technology in unique ways? So, that's taking it to a different level. One is, you know, I have systems that are outdated, I just need to update or upgrade them, and one is, how do I get a little bit more innovative and maybe use some advanced technologies as well? You see, one of the challenges as well, and this plays into trying to make a recommendation for an organizational structure, IT staff retention and attraction, and I'll say, in public sector overall is very difficult. I'll say, it's probably, it's difficult in a lot of industries, but it's more difficult in public sector because of competition from other, from industry, private industry, and what they're offering some of the IT professionals. So, those are a few of the things, and you see some things about migrating to the cloud and other areas. But wanted also focus in on, what's that look like for K-12, or the school environment? And as you might expect, a good number of these are focused in on the classroom, right? The idea of collaborative and mobile learning, maybe personalized and adaptive learning. I've been in, serving public sector for over 30 years, and we've been talking about personalized instruction since day one. Now, artificial intelligence might be the way that we unlock that, but the idea that, you know, one size fits one, really, you can't have a vanilla system in place that serves the needs of everyone, you need to focus on the individual needs, and this is about that. But you see another area in there, which is physical security and cybersecurity again on the school side. One of the other things you see are staff shortages, both from a teacher and a staff standpoint, and so some of the staff side of it also plays into the organizational structure. So, we looked at all of those data points of the various steps that I mentioned, the trends, we looked at best practices, we looked at what others were doing across the country, because we serve public sector institutions across the country, and we use that, as well as best practices from research, to look at what you were doing and to make recommendations. So, the big focus, right, was people. And if you look at your structure, we broke it down, you have staff, IT staff, and remember, this is a point-in-time assessment, right? We did it in the summer, things have been moving and changing along the way, but we did it, our information is based on that point in time when we were in gathering all that data. The IT staff divided, right, between the town and the School Department, and you see what the schools have in terms of IT staff, what the town has, and you see that, what we say is, maybe it's a little below industry benchmarks, and those are sometimes, when you get industry benchmarks, they're benchmarked against much larger organizations, because those are the ones they can readily get data from. What we also point out here are some of the different roles. Obviously, for the school, you have educational technology, integration specialists that are focused on integrating technology into the classroom. You have AV technicians that serve both the school and town, and some other independent roles in there that are identified. The easiest way, maybe, to explain it is to look at a picture, right? And this shows what we were just describing, which is, the school has staff dedicated to school service and support, and then the town does. But what you see is what was mentioned right up front. There are vacant positions that the town has, and you see the positions that the school has, the integration specialists are those folks that, again, focus on the classroom, the computer technicians for the school really focus on end-user support, and the IT support specialists do the same for the town. And then you see some infrastructure network people in terms of support positions that are in place. Now, one of the other, remember, I mentioned we did some surveys, and one of the surveys that we did was what we call a time and effort allocation survey. And what that is, is it's asking staff to give us their best estimate in percentages of where they spend their time. And what we wanted to share was, you'd like your staff to, IT staff, to be spending as much time as possible on IT functions, and this shows that 12% of their time is spent on non-IT functions. And the examples are things like printing payroll checks or accounts payable checks, report generation, maybe other data reporting functions. So, these are some operational things that you wouldn't necessarily call an IT function, that maybe the departments could do these things in a self-service format or on their own. So, we point those out, and it's another layer of trying to figure out what's the best structure. The other area we look at is how the department is staffed and what kind of training is in place, what kind of external resources you utilize, and this shows an opportunity when it looks at the...there is cooperation, collaboration between the two, you, two organizations or the town itself and the School Department, but also, you have multiple IT staff that are going to retire in the near term. So, that has an impact on, well, how do we plan for that, and what's the best structure to support that? What kind of succession planning do we have in place? The town does use some external third parties, the school relies more on internal resources for some tasks that potentially could be external third parties, but the problem has been, you haven't had good luck or good success with some of those third parties. So, their responsiveness, effectiveness hasn't been to the level that the school would like. Now, remember, we were talking about that end-user survey, stakeholders, over 300 responses to that. These are some of the comments that were received. We were just trying to, yeah, what were some of the high-level themes? And we, you see, we split it between school and town. So, one's about unavailability of tech support, but one is lack of technology training, and this is for stakeholders, end-users, people using the technology. And you see that both on the school and the town. You see cybersecurity, you know, that should always be a concern, right? Because you're never done addressing that. You see some things about challenges with the technology in terms of being able to get it to work to the highest level of effectiveness. So, and some examples are Wi-Fi coverage, some is connectivity for remote buildings at the town. So, a lot of areas of commonality, some things that are unique as well to each group. But we also then, remember, we had all those stakeholder interviews, so we wanted to see how that overlaid with the results of that end-user survey. And these were then meetings that we conducted and had groups of anywhere from four to 10 or 12 or 15 different people participating in them. And here, you see consistency on need for additional training, both from the school and from the town. A lot of compliments for the IT staff, the folks in the department received high praise from stakeholders. And remember, we talked about the integration specialists who are focused in the classroom, a lot of them are not spending as much time as they would like on classroom integration because they're getting pulled into support, which is natural, because they're there in the building. They're also getting pulled into supporting maybe non-instructional staff the same thing. "Oh, hey, you're in the building, I have a question for you while you're here." And some of it is also then, what kind of support can we get, and how timely is it, is another area that's mentioned on here. The connectivity, too, it was mentioned in the survey, it was also mentioned quite a bit in our interviews. All right, so, those are a lot of data points. Now, we're going to go into some recommendations, and to do that, we have to review this I-chart. So, first off, recommendations are given, the easy way to say it, it's a stoplight approach, red, yellow, green. So, red, I see your handout, I believe, if you're looking, has more detail, I believe in it, we streamlined it for this presentation. I believe this slide is in there, it's just a little bit further back. We decided, since we're going to talk about recommendations, it probably made sense to bring this up a little sooner, since it's the way that we classify everything. And so, red says, and we rated things, our recommendations on priority, how big of a priority is it? So, red, it's a high priority, and how much effort is it? Red, it's a lot of effort. Yellow, obviously, medium, green, not as big a priority and not as much effort. That's what you get with that. And then we looked at timing to see, when should the recommendations be implemented? And we broke them down into zero to three months, three to six, six to 12, and then greater than 12 months. And then we use $1 sign up to $4 signs for the magnitude of the budget. So, that's what all of these little symbols are, because you'll see in a second where we actually use these when we're making recommendations. So, let's go to the crux of what you asked us to look at. What's the recommended org structure? This is what we're recommending, and this shows that we're taking, we're combining IT support under one umbrella, so that, remember, on the current structure, you had two, one for school, one for town, this has just one. You have an existing position overseeing the school technology, this is saying, let's now have a chief technology officer that oversees technology for both the town and the school. And then you see some positions on there that we would call new, either new responsibilities like the chief technology officer and like that project manager. They're people that are in the organization, but now they're going to have responsibility for both the school and the town, so it's a little bit different than what they were doing before. And that orange one, the cybersecurity specialist, is a new position, supporting both the school and the town, but it's part of the...boy, that thing's sensitive, it's part of the IT department overall. And then you notice that shading on the application and data, that shows, again, something dedicated, right now anyway, this is short-term structure. It shows that dedicated, we have someone dedicated to town applications and data, because they are unique and specialized, and we have someone dedicated to school applications and data. Maybe over time, longer term, we can then blend those under one umbrella as well and have a little cross-training, but again, you're probably still going to have some staff that are very specific, because the application, classroom applications are obviously very different, trying to handle the applications that are used by public safety or utilities, there's some nuances there. So, we want to have some people that have that specialized knowledge, but maybe they do have some folks that can back them up, because, didn't mention it, but you probably saw it on there, one of the bullets was, because you have people with specialized knowledge, sometimes, and only one person with that specialized knowledge, sometimes that can become a bottleneck, right? So, you want to have some cross-training if you can. So, that's the org structure, and you see the integration specialist off to the left, you notice they're not reporting to the chief technology officer, because they do have a reporting structure today up separately, and we're not changing that. But there would be coordination and collaboration between the person who leads or directs the integration specialist and the chief technology officer. There is today, that would continue. So, now, here's where that little coding chart comes into play, and you'll see some recommendations here about developing succession and transition plan, right? We talked about staff that are retiring, and this gives you priority, gives you effort. They're not retiring tomorrow, this is probably in the next two to three years, and so that's why it doesn't have a higher priority. The timing, though, to develop the plan is short-term. And then, we have individualized training plans that we like to see developed for IT staff as things continue to evolve in technology, and as we want to do cross-training, we need those plans developed for IT staff, so they can continue their professional growth. And one of the things we say is, this is an initial recommended organizational structure. We have a lot of different opportunities for improvement, and we think you should reassess staffing, you know, six months, a year down the road, as recommendations have been implemented, as new technologies, maybe old technologies are migrated out, as other applications maybe get updated, again, but that should be assessed further down the road. And then we mention, external vendors should also be part of this as well. That's a way, again, to, we're trying not to just add staff into the organization before you really assess, how much can we leverage external vendors, how much more efficient and effective can we get with process and procedure? And you'll see some other recommendations in here that will help with that. So, that's what these few recommendations are focused on. And then we have, still under what we call the people recommendations, we have some that were centered on the school, the professional development program, member staff were asking for additional training. So, we have one for the school and one for the town. We have formal communications plan, both for the school and the town. We have connectivity, remember, there were some comments or questions about connectivity, and there are a few others that are specific to things that we heard. You'll notice on this one, the things that are highest priority are technology training program for town, we put it at a medium for the school, and the reason for that is because the school also has technology integration specialists who help with staff development in the classroom. And then we have that connectivity and support at remote locations, we had that as a high priority as well. Now, we're going to go into process areas. And one of the things that we say here is, you do have a technology advisory board, that's more town residents and IT leadership, we want to see one that, we talked about, there's not a technology governance body in place that's composed of actually departmental personnel, and so we'll have some things that speak to that. Also, we, there isn't today a strategic plan or technology roadmap in place for either the school or the town. This assessment, organizational assessment, can serve as the basis for that roadmap, but obviously, it would be taking it to another level as well. We talk about some of the processes for like budgeting, for procurement, for procuring administrative software, how do we manage all of our applications so that, you know, a lot of times you'll buy an application, but not necessarily look to see, do we have one already that does that? And so, you end up getting overlap of applications, and it's always good and healthy to determine, is that software package that we want to upgrade? Do we want to just retain it the way it is, or do we want to just retire it because we have something else in the application portfolio that meets that need? And so, we have some recommendations for process, really focused in on governance, putting this formal governance structure in place, and that's the one that's rated as high priority, the red dot under priority. We also talk about wanting that IT department to be an enabler of departmental operations, and that's consultant speak for helping your departments be more effective and efficient, right? The departments are the ones that really understand their needs, so we're So we don't want to just deploy technology for technology's sake. We want it in partnership with our user community and the departments to understand where their pain points are, and IT is an enabler of that. Well, that effort is also red because that's not something that is easy to do. We also have the strategic technology plans. Remember, we talked about those. And we talked about also policies and procedures, putting those in place for technology governance that we're recommending. This graphic shows who all should be part of that. We say there should be a steering committee and all of the departments, well, as many as effective. We don't want to have a 50-person steering committee, but we mentioned some key ones. The educational side, so media and digital learning, both operational sides. So financial operations as it relates to the schools, as it relates to the town. Public safety is a key area, public works, library. And there's probably other key departments that want to be represented on that steering committee. But we also say out of that, because again, you want to have some focus areas, and so there'll be some subcommittees that form. Some that are specific to the school, some that are specific to the town, some that are specific to data governance. There might be something on cybersecurity. There's a variety of different areas. Maybe there's a software selection that needs to happen, and there'll be a subcommittee that's formed to be put in place for that. Then I want to finish up with the roadmap and budget. Some of the, all of these recommendations, remember, we grouped them in zero to three, three to six, six to 12 months. So we took the year one recommendations and tried to come up with where we could, both a, and I guess I should explain, NRC is non-recurring cost, so that's one-time cost. And ARC is annual recurring cost. So that is something that you're going to pay year after year after year. And so we tried to look at it from both the one-time as well as a recurring operational cost perspective. And we took this and broke it down by the school, by the town, and then combined them together for the ones that we could. And should point out, when you get to year two, what we said is not as many of these, you know, we have replaced or upgraded some of the legacy technologies, but we didn't have all the data to make a determination of, well, what is it that you really would replace? And that would determine the budget. Some of that will happen in year one, and that'll then allow you to put that budget in place for year two. You know, getting an accurate detailed inventory in place, evaluating how well that hardware is meeting your needs, how well that software is meeting your needs, and figuring out what we're going to replace or upgrade along the way. So that's the quick review of the organizational assessment. You had a little bit more detail, as you noticed, in your packet. And now I'm going to take a break and open it up to questions.
Thank you so much, Marvin. I appreciate it. I understand that the goal is to relook at staffing needs once we've gone through the first year. But if I were to ask relative to those industry benchmarks, what's our deficit?
So here's the issue. I'm going to show, being a true consultant now, of course, it depends, right? And the depend, and not trying to be coy, but the depend is those industry benchmarks, a lot of them are based on much larger organizations. And you also have to look at the technologies that you have in place and how well you're using and leveraging them. In some cases, maybe not as effectively. And also, what kind of processes do you have in place? Do you have governance in place? Those things aren't in place today. And so that makes you a little more inefficient than you could be, which is why we say, let's not just add a variety of positions or add a bunch of positions until we figure out more efficiencies. We're trying to go at what we think is a good level for supporting the organization. Once some efficiencies are put in place, you'll probably find, here's the other thing, you don't want to hire someone in a position that you then find you don't need down the road because you've upgraded technologies, and that's not something that's required.
I was not asking at all to add people now. I was just trying to think ahead for the future so that I had some idea.
Yeah. Don't know if we have a good, if you, we don't have a number. Because I don't think there is a magic number. There's a lot of benchmarks that look at how many devices, how many people. It also, it is also dependent on how well the professional development program for staff and how well they utilize the tools, because they may be calling for support for something that they should be able to solve on their own with proper training.
Okay.
So it is a little complex on that side.
Great. And then one of the things that I don't recall being absolutely evident in here, but that everybody at the table should be aware of, is that the employees that we're talking about are under different union structures. So in fact, today, they are not able to, even if one person's skills could be useful in another area, this is one of the inefficiencies that you're talking about because of the union structure that's in place, which limits the working environment or which sets the working environment of those employees. So people should just keep that in mind. That would be one of the other organizational issues that needs to be covered. So let me open it up to questions. Kathy?
Thank you. That was very interesting. And I'm wondering, with your experience working with public sector entities, have you seen other towns that combined IT or had some integration of IT across schools and town?
Yes. Yeah, there are other examples, and even here in Massachusetts where they have done just that.
And are there any?
We gave some, we gave some of those sites, I think, and we did send a few examples.
And are there any keys to making it work that we see from other towns?
Well, one of the keys we think you already have in place, and that is good collaboration and cooperation between the town and the school department. Where we found it hasn't worked as effectively, that was the issue. And we had to get over that hurdle before we could actually do any kind of combined operations between the two. So you're at a good position for that. The other area for success is just the technologies that are in place, how streamlined they are. You'll get there. I mean, that's not a roadblock. It's just something that makes it more challenging because you have different systems, different ways of doing things for tech requests or just procurement. You know, trying to get some consistency would help.
Other questions? Alyssa?
Thank you so much for your report. And obviously, this represents a lot of work, not only from your team, but people in the town and the school responding to and gathering information. I take away from this that we can do this. I guess I'm still looking for that, like, the reasons why we should. Like, we can do it, but what are the big benefits to doing it? What would we expect the outcome? Particularly, you know, I look at this current structure, and it's like, you know, I sit on the school side, right? And we have a great leader, and we're, you know, closer to fully staffed. And so my job on the school committee is to make sure that we're delivering the best services to the students. So I feel like I need to ask that question. Why should the school committee engage in this bigger process? Sorry, I don't mean to get you comfortable. No offense.
The biggest reason, it is still an efficiency overall for the town to have it under one roof. And it also will bring, I think, some opportunities for advancing technologies on both sides through that collaboration. We said it exists, but it could be better, right? Because you are separate and distinct. And bringing it under one roof or one umbrella will allow a little bit more of that collaboration, maybe some more unique ideas that the school is doing something one way that the town didn't even think of, or vice versa. The town is doing something that the city didn't think of. And you can do things more effectively when you have, you know, a larger, let's say, purchasing cooperative, if you will. Workstations are workstations, right? And if you're buying a lot more of them, if you're buying more licenses for software, if you have something that you want to put in place for some project management software, and you're using it across both, we think you can just keep benefiting from that kind of collaboration and cooperation. And it will, in the end, be more effective. And we tried to structure it in such a way that you notice those integration specialists, we didn't just move them under that structure. We left them out, reporting up through the educational side because that obviously is a key component. And you'll see that certain departments really should be giving input. We said IT should be an enabler, and the way they can be an enabler is through this combined effort and not having redundancy, not having manual systems, not doing, you know, 12% of the function is some manual things that are not IT. Let's get those out of the system where we can.
Let me turn to Dan next, if I can.
If I may, if I may follow up on that. Your question is the right one. And it's one that I've been thinking about since we embarked on this. And I think Ann and the town manager and Dave and even Mark Macias, who should wave back there, because Mark has been the one keeping everything together, along with Jeff O'Neil and Will and all the other staff. I've kind of been the burr inside of this, I would say, because I like what we're doing and I want to be left alone. I do think the town has a model for this with building maintenance. And many, many years ago, 19 or 20 years ago, okay, almost 30 years ago, the town and the schools decided, whether it was through town meeting or a conversation much like this, that maintenance would be merged. There used to be, as I understand it, the school custodian union and a town custodian union, along with tradespeople. And budgets were merged, the support, and now that's run on the town side, even though the schools are the largest user of that service. And I think it's taken a very long time for it to work well, a very long time. I would say in the last several years, it's worked really well. And I proved that to Kate's leadership and Karis Lustig and Barry and Shannon and a lot of people. So there's a model that exists there. I do think there's an opportunity for collaboration with the town. There's an opportunity for efficiencies, to gain efficiencies in service and programming. We didn't talk that much about it, but the whole area of cybersecurity and security is something that is sorely, something that we need to, I should say, something that we really need to be paying attention to, particularly with the advent of AI, which is a whole nother area where there can be some opportunities for working together. Not only opportunity, there should be an expectation that we're working together on areas like that and security. And for someone, I think, finally, there's a title if they're chief technology officer. I'm not sure that's the right title, but the notion is somebody who has a vision and a strategy that can be implemented with, in conjunction with town boards, that will provide a vision for technology and technology use in this community moving forward. I think that's a key component as well. There are other reasons, but I think those are key ones that I've come over time to appreciate could be really powerful and helpful.
Think this is on. So, you know, on balance, it seems like very compelling to try to enhance efficiencies and leverage vendor relationships and the like. Two questions, if I may, though, for towns like ours who have done this. My first question is, so you now have a chief technology officer. So we're having difficulty recruiting for positions that are not as high of a level as the chief technology officer. So will it be more, you know, difficult to attract that individual? One, and then two, you know, will some, some very talented person use this as a jumping off point for becoming a chief technology officer in a for-profit enterprise? And so in the towns that have adopted this structure, do you see greater turnover of some of those top positions? Just wondering what your insights are on that.
So first off, your first question was about finding and retaining someone in that role. And I think, again, it's a good opportunity, right? And those organizations where we've seen it combined, now I don't think we've seen greater turnover necessarily in that. It's a challenging role, and someone who's up for a challenge, it obviously is a good opportunity.
Thank you for all of the work. This is a really interesting idea. I wonder, though, it seems to me, I guess, concern that I have is that many of these departmental needs seem to me to be incredibly specialized and frankly, are deserving of an IT CTO all on their own, whether that's police or library or public safety. So I'm wondering, sort of to the point that was made before, how do we ensure that this doesn't dilute the effectiveness across the board as we try to serve all these different masters, particularly the school departments, efficiency? So that's a question that I have. But I also would ask Dan and Kate maybe to speak to, it's my understanding that there has been collaboration for the past year, and maybe they can tell us sort of how it's gone thus far and what they see that's so promising that we might want to jump into
The really specialized work, we have been contracting out, and I believe the intent is on some of that public safety 24/7 work, that that would be the model going forward. So I think that is a way that we'll solve that piece. There's been, I will say, the school department's technology thinking has been really robust in thinking about policies and systems. And ours has grown more from a data processing role, running a lot of, a lot of financial systems. So we are seeing and we have been benefiting from the thinking that they have had in terms of just how you set up, you know, employees. And a small example is, you know, an employee at a desk has this set of things that they get when they're hired. And that is not something that we had institutionalized before. So those are the kinds of things that we've been exposed to that will be really helpful to us. And I, those are the kinds of systems that are true regardless of what department you're in. The notion that you'd have application administrators who could help troubleshoot, you know, a permit system or a dog licensing system, these are all the same kinds of systems. So I think for the highly technical pieces like cybersecurity we're talking about, whether that should stay as an outsourced, but in terms of the public safety piece and some of the highly technical public works pieces, those may be, they may be outsourced. those may be outsourced or they may not be. Do you want to add anything to that?
You know, I would add that I think there has been, there's been a synergy of efforts to try to work together. And I think that's paid some dividends. But, you know, I think it's also important to add. I know that Marvin, you shared the decision of a year one budget or process a year two. I think this is a multi-years. I think this is three or four years. This is not something that's going to happen right away. First of all, I think there's a cost. By the way, the cost for the next couple of years is in excess of a million dollars to make this happen. Some of those are one-time costs, some of those are ongoing costs. And there may be others. And there may be more staff that need to be hired. So, those are things that will be real, that we will have to confront as a community. You know, already, our payroll system, human resources, budgeting and finance are already inextricably tied together. And so, this does provide an opportunity to think differently about how we integrate those systems, how those systems are managed to come to fruition and the cost and the training. The professional development opportunities alone for our staff would be, I think, enormous. And there are some possibilities. So, some of those things have taken place and more to come if systems are even more integrated.
Josh?
Is there ways to... Notice any differences in expectations on levels of service between any of the departments? Because I think that might be where, if there are different expectations, merging may be difficult, we might have to overcome some hurdles.
Yeah, so, one that readily comes to mind is public safety, right? Their needs are 24/7. And so, that's, part of that is external provider that's used for that. Again, when you have needs that maybe are above and beyond the support that could be provided, that's when you might look for maybe some kind of outsourced relationship or external vendor that could help shore that up. But there are other examples of additional needs in the classroom, right? That's a unique area, and that's why you have integration specialists dedicated to that role. And some of the departments that we listed, that would be part of that steering committee. The idea is, you'd have everyone coming together to discuss some of their unique needs and maybe needs that aren't getting addressed. And then, obviously, bringing that forward for, okay, how do we address this? Is this something that we look at permanent staff? Is this something that we look at staff within the individual departments? Right? Because there could be some people within the operational departments. Or do we look at external vendors or a combination thereof? But that does need, there is unique areas and that does need to be addressed.
Thank you. And then, my other question is, I noticed in the RFQ that there was, the initial idea is that this combined organization would be housed in the school department. I wonder if that's the current thinking and just what the rationale is.
Well, the big idea is that we, we'll call it for the purpose of this discussion, the chief technology officer would report to the superintendent. Now, that's the big idea. I think the final decision around that is a conversation. I do think that there needs to be a, you know, reporting to someone rather than to a board. You know, there are two positions here at this table that report to a board and that makes sense. I don't think that a third position would make sense to a separate board. And just as the director of building maintenance reports to the town manager, it's part of the town manager's structure, this would report to the superintendent. I think a key part of that, though, it does come down to the people. And it does come down to the agreements, which may mean, Kate and I have talked about this, is there a memorandum of understanding? Because Kate and I will not be here forever. None of us around the table will be here forever. And so, you want to have some systems in place that will carry on. And so, an MOU may make sense. That would further detail the responsibilities and all that. We are not proposing that that position, again, I'm calling it the CTO, be something for next year. We're with his support and his agreement. We're hoping that Mr. Messias and his team will continue to take us through the next, you know, this wilderness for a little bit. But we also don't want to take advantage of that expertise and time. They've been putting in enormous hours to help keep things together. And we have to make some strategic decisions that are based on budget and planning, you know, within the next couple of years. Thank you.
Andrea?
Thank you for this, and I appreciate the spirit in which we're all sort of approaching this. I wonder if you could speak to employee recruitment and retention and how this might benefit it? Because it sounds to me that this could make our IT positions more attractive to folks and certainly opportunities for a lot of, you know, cross-training and different types of learning and different types of experiences that we would be able to give folks in a combined organization? So, if you could just speak to that?
I think that is an opportunity when you look at having additional applications, implementing newer, more advanced technologies, and giving technology folks a path to actually exploring those technologies. But the other recommendation that we made was professional development plans for each IT staff member. That's a key component of retention as well. And even attracting new staff to the town is, what are you doing from a professional development perspective? The other question they ask are, what technologies do you have in place and what are you supporting? Right? And to see that, you know, do they want to support printers or the more what you would call normal, everyday tasks? Or is that something that, again, an external vendor could support? And let's keep your internal IT staff working on some of the more advanced technologies and helping to implement, integrate those and advance their skills? So, I think you're exactly right. That could be a definite attraction and retention method for the town. Yeah?
Kevin?
It's very interesting. Thanks for pointing out this. I think it's a very interesting idea. I'm thinking about the time effort allocation analysis, 12%? These numbers seem really surprising to me. And I'm wondering, first, how firm are they? And then, is there anything in the structure that might address it? So, it doesn't, you might change those numbers a bit.
So, 12%, we'd like to see it a lot lower than that, right? The things that will address that to get it lower are software-related in terms of getting staff able to have some self-service and not, you know, part of it's reporting, part of it's printing things out. Some of those are things that IT organizations have been doing for years, but don't necessarily need to do them. And maybe if we had done this, you know, years ago, that might have been qualified as an IT function. But today, we don't, we don't think that should be an IT function. And it was the reason we pointed it out. It's, let's address that, see how we can move those. Because, again, we're talking about staffing.
Right.
If we can bring that amount of time back into IT-related functions, that'll have an impact on some of the questions you were asking about. Do we have the time to spend with the departments and work on some of those specialized needs? Let's grab some of that time back.
Okay.
Any other questions? We don't need a decision of any type tonight, right? At this point, we're just looking at proceeding, continue to proceed forward on this path. I don't hear from the various board members any flags of concern about continuing forward. So, I think that was one of the things we were trying to listen to once people had a chance to understand what we had done for the last year. And then, we would be asking the superintendent and the town manager and their staff to look at what the plan is for next year. And as Dan said, I do expect it's a multi-year plan to actually evolve, to cover this structure. I think there's an intent, if I heard things properly, potentially to make some more immediate changes that might address some of the cybersecurity issues, just given the key vulnerabilities and risks associated with that. But let me turn it over. I see Dan's ready to jump in.
I think we can, you know, we're in the midst of developing budgets for next year. We will share our budget request with the school committee next Tuesday and the finance committee Wednesday evening next week. We are, we're not proposing in the school department budget for FY '25 that any additional costs for consulting, security, staffing be set in the budget. However, the boards can anticipate that there will be some warrant articles that we may propose to the school committee and to the select board to be included for, as we phase this in. And we still have to figure those pieces out. But that certainly could be, would be part of what we propose in the near term.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions, then I think we would say thank you to Marvin. We appreciate your guidance and your help in trying to lay out what our challenges are and what some of the opportunities are going forward and where the vulnerabilities and risks are. Those are, I think, extremely critical. And then, we would be able to adjourn as individual boards. In the select board's case, we'll be adjourning to reconvene again later this evening. But I would welcome, let me turn it over to Andrea first, maybe for the school committee.
Thank you. Chair Cooley? Is there a motion to adjourn our school committee meeting this evening? I'm going to say, move by Liz. Is there a second? Second by Connie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? That's a 5-0-0 vote, and we are adjourned.
Great. And I would similarly welcome a motion from the select board. We managed to do that individually. Perfect team. Any discussion? We know Kevin wants to object. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
We know.